...after receiving a large increase on the plan and having to negotiate benefit changes in order to get our increase down. In 2017, we introduced accountable care organizations, which are the narrow network plans, and we had very strong enrollment in those plans for this year. We've also negotiated cost-sharing arrangements between the employer and employees. So employees, as you know, share in the cost of the employee benefits in the medical plan, and therefore, they are very involved with us in the strategy and in working through how we offer our benefits and keeping our costs as low as possible. We also have spent a lot of time developing a robust wellness program with incentives. We have a phenomenal 80% engagement with our employee population, which is breaking all the records at Medica. The Benefits Labor Management Group works very hard to come up with wellness incentives and strategies to engage city employees in their health and to provide opportunities for them to get educated on healthcare and to make better choices and also to engage with health programs that they may need to better manage any of their conditions. We've also negotiated rate caps with the current insurance carrier. We've been with Medica for 10 years now, and they have been a very good partner for the city. The last two years, we were able to negotiate a 5% rate cap on our contract, which is why we were able to keep the costs predictable. One of our continuing points of frustration has been that fully insured plans in general lack transparency, and I think Jim touched on a lot of those points in his comments earlier. But it's limited the city's ability to assess our actual plan costs. So one way to look at a fully insured plan is they will predict what our healthcare costs are going to be and then charge us a per-employee premium amount, and we pay that premium to them every month. If they're paying our claims and therefore taking the risk, and if at the end of the year, our claims have actually been lower than what they predicted, they keep the excess and it goes into their bank account, not ours. During the year, we have no idea how we're actually performing. We don't know until we get that next year's renewal, in which they tell us how much we're going to pay next year. So basically, we take their package as is. There's not a lot of flexibility to design the benefits you want. You have to use their pharmacy vendor, their wellness program, a lot of the built-in things they charge for, but we don't have a say in being able to take them out or add them in. So beginning in 2013, the city started exploring self-insurance through collaboration with our labor partners and the Labor Management Committee. In 2014, there was a council resolution supporting the transition to self-insured medical plan as early as January 1st of 2015. However, at that time, while there was continued discussions and work, there were a number of obstacles, and due to the negotiated rate caps that we received from Medica for the 5% two-year guarantee, the city determined to remain fully insured. So as of now, we're in the best position since 2013 to proceed with moving to self-insurance. Just to talk a little bit about the advantages of self-insurance, the main one is cost control. Annual cost increases for self-insured plans have historically been significantly less than for fully insured plans, and our colleagues at the county are here. They would be happy to answer questions about their experience with self-insurance. We do collaborate with them quite often on benefit plans and talk about strategy together. So they've been excellent resources for us as well as finance. The city will also avoid certain taxes and fees, including premium tax and the Affordable Care Act health insurer tax if we self-insure, and we'll be looking at some of those percentages later. The reserves then in a self-insured arrangement would be retained by the city rather than contributed to the insurance company. So improved cost transparency will lead to greater ability for us to evaluate our medical plan design. Since we're able to select our own package of services and benefits, we know where our dollars will be going, and we will receive reporting on each component of our benefit plan, which is now, under a fully insured arrangement, very challenging to get reporting broken down into the services that you actually are purchasing. Self-insurance also allows greater flexibility with program design and administration. We can carve out, for example, certain services or programs to best-in-class providers and vendors. For example, pharmacy benefit management. If we determine that we think we can get a better package of services and price negotiated, we could issue an RFP for a new pharmacy benefit manager, and we would be able to select a best-in-class vendor that meets our needs, not that's just included with the carrier's package. Other areas that can be carved out would include wellness programs, disease management programs, or EAP as examples. So our 2018 medical renewal, we received the 2018 renewal earlier this month from Medica. Medica used the 2016 city claims experience to project what they think our 2018 claims would be. Medica utilized an 8.72 annual underwriting trend assumption. This is the trend number that they used for all of their fully insured book of business this year. They don't give us a lot of information how they come up with their trend. We're just usually told what trend they're using. So they also included the retention components applicable to insured plans that are not applicable under self-insurance, and that those things include a 2% state premium tax, the 2% reserve for Medica, their plan reserves, and then a 3.4% Affordable Care Act health insurer tax. So those are examples of the components that we would save going self-insured. Medica initially said that they calculated our rate increase at a 9.4, but they were agreeable to giving us a quoted rate increase of 7.5%. So that's what we were looking at for next year, 7.5%. We have contracted with Deloitte Consulting for our benefits consultants, and Deloitte has a lot of experience working on self-insured plans. They did work getting Hennepin County set up initially, the state of Minnesota. They work with Met Council, and they work with Dakota County. Our consultant is here, and he can answer any questions about the cost projections on a self-insured basis. They have a team of health actuaries that are very experienced in this area, and they all worked on this projection along with HR and finance. So the self-insured projection developed by Deloitte also used the 2016 city experience to project our claims. Deloitte used a 7.8% annual underwriting trend assumption based on their survey data, market trends from the other local health plans, and also the city experience. They included fees for Medica and the internal administration for all of our current benefit components. So everything that we're offering to our employees today is included in the self-insured projection for next year. They also incorporated a stop-loss insurance premium at a level of $350,000 deductible. This level of stop-loss insurance was reviewed carefully by HR and finance along with Deloitte. We looked at the last five years of the city's high claims experience, meaning claims over the individual claims that reached an amount of $250,000 each. So we looked at that to determine the appropriate level of stop-loss that would protect the city against any unplanned high-cost claims in the future. We also included the Affordable Care Act Pecory Fee, which is required of self-insured plans, and a reserve margin of approximately 4%. So Deloitte ended up with a projected rate increase required for 2018 of 5%, which is a savings of 2.5% over Medica's fully insured renewal. And that amounts to, when you're looking at a $60 million benefit program, a significant savings to the city, which is important for us as we look to develop the most competitive benefit package that we can so that we are able to attract and retain that top talent for the city. And now I'm going to hand it over to Lori Johnson, who will go into details about our staff recommendation.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Yes, Chair Glidden, council members, thank you for having us here today to speak about this. As we said, this has been definitely a partnership with the Employee Labor Group's Attorney's Office, the consultant, HR, and finance. It is a big decision, as you've referenced earlier. We wanted to make sure we go into this with an open mind, reviewing all of the information very carefully. We did not know what recommendation we would end up with when we started because we needed to review the data, determine how it would affect the city, the employees, and long-term. This isn't a short-term decision, it's a long-term decision. So we took all of the data into consideration, and when we got that data after we found out what Medica's fully insured rate would be, we are now coming forward with a recommendation that we implement a single employer self-insured medical plan effective January 1, 2018. And again, this is based on research of data, review of claims information, looking at city exposure, reserve requirements, and the full gamut of how this will affect us. It was not entered into lightly. We really did make sure that we were very comfortable with this recommendation. One part of this, though, that I mentioned is it is a single employer plan, meaning that MBC and YBC will need to transition off of the city's plan, and that has to do with the insurance requirements outside of the city's control. So we are working with both of those groups on this. It's something that MBC was notified of back in 2014, that it would be pending, so it's nothing new for them. The Housing Authority has already done this. They transitioned off in 2015. We are making ourselves available to assist them with that transition, and we will be here for them as we work through that. So again, as we mentioned, we will maintain our current carrier. Medica will be the administrator of this self-insurance plan. The benefits will not change. Employees will not notice a difference for the most part. They will access their benefits the same. They will use their insurance coverage the same, and that was really an important part to us, is that it does not adversely affect the employees. As Ms. Denison discussed, we did purchase stop-loss insurance, both at an individual and an aggregate level. Those numbers were reviewed carefully to make sure that we had analyzed that risk, and as she said, both Deloitte and the city came to a recommendation that that individual stop-loss be at $350,000. We're also building in reserves. Reserves are a very important part of this because we cannot definitively say what claims are going to be. We need to have something to offset any large claims that there may be that don't fall into that insurance category. The 5% increase allows us to have a 4% reserve, or that 4% of that increase is going to go into our reserves this first year. We want to continue building those reserves. We'll go through more information on the components of the total reserve in just a little bit. The other part is that because this is a significant change, and we want to make sure that the council is aware of the financial impacts and the effectiveness of this, that we will be reporting back to you over the first two years and periodically thereafter. And if the council would prefer something other than that sort of reporting, we can certainly implement that as well. Moving on to the self-insured reserve guidelines, this is, as I said, an important part of our equation in moving to self-insurance, and I do want to say that those reserves, once we get them set up for self-insurance, are for that purpose only, so they will be segregated to maintain the reserves needed for the self-insurance plan. There are several components of a reserve, first being the incurred but not paid claims. So claims lag, and we'll go into that a little bit more in detail as well. So 11, or excuse me, 8% to 11% for that purpose. The other is a contingency reserve for rate stabilization. That's one of the main areas of having this, is so we can have more control, as was mentioned earlier, and also to cover unexpected poor claims experience. That's about 15% to 20%. And then reserve for unpaid retention costs, meaning if we were to end this plan, there's a little tail that comes after that, and we need to be able to fund that. We want to make sure that that is there as well. So the total typical target is between 25% and 35% of our total claims, so between $15 and $20 million that would be in that reserve eventually. As we mentioned, the claims are about $60 million, so we need to have a good-sized reserve to cover some of that, and that's built in with part of the premium that there's a reserve coming through. Self-funding in reserves. Again, there's the incurred but not paid claims. When you go to the doctor, it takes several months for your bill to come, so employees will be paying premiums effective in January. We will likely not be paying those bills until March or April. So that also helps build up a reserve for the payment of those claims. And then, as you can see, there's always that lag in payment of claims, which is typical with any insurance company, and in fact, sometimes they come well after the fact. So with that, that is our recommendation. There are two items that we're requesting on the agenda for action. One is authorizing implementation of a single employer self-insured medical plan that should be effective January 1, 2018, and also authorizing necessary contracts to effectuate the implementation of the self-insured medical plan. And with that, I'm going to call Ms. Denison back up to talk about our timeline and then to open it up for questions.
So our proposed transition timeline, April 28th, city council approval to implement a single employer self-insured medical plan effective January 1, 2018. In May, we've already started some employee communications just this week on City Talk in conjunction with this meeting. We published an article that the city was considering a proposal to self-insure and then what that actually means for employees. May and June, we would work on amending the Medica contract to administration only. We started this work earlier in the year, so we have February through November transitioning the MBC and YCB to their own benefit programs. We are already having those conversations and helping them with those transition plans, similar to how we worked with MPHA in 2014 to transition them to their own payroll and benefit plans. May through September, we'll be working closely with finance to establish all the internal financial procedures, and then January 1st of 2018 would be the beginning of the new plan year. We would have open enrollment as usual during the month of November, and the plan would be that we're not changing the benefit offering for 2018, continue with Medica and the current plan design that we have today. So with that, we will take any questions.
So, and I'm using speaker management for those who are able to do that. I see a couple tabs up. I think Councilmember Gordon was first.
Thank you very much, and this is certainly a lot to take in and figure out, and I commend everybody who's been working on it for so long, and I know that we have been moving in this direction slowly and carefully. And I'm, first of all, want to be clear that the action we take today, will this go right to the council meeting tomorrow, or will we take this up then in two weeks from, I mean on Friday, or will we take this up two weeks from Friday?
So this was actually a question I had looking at this, because was it anticipated that this wasn't touching with ways and means? That was the only thing that was a little bit unusual, and it's my fault that I didn't kind of touch that and touch base with Councilmember Quincy. So I think my understanding is staff would like it to move forward just so they can stay on their timeline, but I wanted to ask about that.
And maybe, I brought that up partly. If we all think it's two weeks from Friday, that would give us more time to maybe get a briefing, ask some more questions, think about it, talk to some employees, understand it a little bit better. So why don't we think about that while I ask my other questions? Another question I had was, has there been any discussion at all about moving the Building Commission or the YCB, the Youth Coordinating Board, employees to be either city or county employees? It's just when I'm looking at it, we have the county, the Building Commission, for example. All the money comes from either the city or the county for all of them, and it's a shared effort. If we see that there are savings that we get by being self-insured, either the city and the county, why don't we find a way so that those savings could also go to pay for the insurance for the Building Commission? And the same with the Youth Coordinating Board, even though some of those funds come from the schools and the parks as well. Has there been any effort or discussion to move in that direction?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Gordon, I'd like to ask Susan Trammell, our benefits attorney. She was, I believe, involved in similar, or Susan Segal.
With regard to the Municipal Building Commission, we would need a change in the state statute, and with respect to the YCB, that would be, it's a joint powers entity, so there would need to be some kind of modification to the joint powers agreement. I know, and you can talk to us more, there's been a lot of support for those two entities in terms of how to proceed.
So I'm chair of the YCB, and so if there's some good information that might give us some guidance in terms of if this is something we want to explore, we could certainly, I could test the waters in terms of the other jurisdictions if there'd be any interest in doing that. So I'm not sure, but I'll put that out there. And I don't know if that would be a big problem with your timeline and everything. I'm sure we could, something to think about anyway. I'm also curious about, when it says maintain the current carrier benefit plan and design, and I think you all tried to talk about this, acting like there'll be absolutely no change when we make this transition. So we all had to sign up for a new clinic plan. Last time we did this, every year it seems like we have to sign up for something else, primary and clinic and network and whatever they're calling it at the time. So when 2018 rolls around, are we going to have to re-sign up with some other kind of plan or clinic or primary provider? Or are we just going to seamlessly be going to our same clinics and family members and physicians?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, good question. Some of those details we will need to work out prior to open enrollment, but typically during open enrollment, we do what is called a positive open enrollment, where we want everybody to go in and make a new election. But the plan for 2018 is to continue offering the same networks that we are currently offering today, although we don't have total control over network changes that may be made outside of the city. So there could be some adjustment in, for example, those ACO network plans, but that information will be well communicated in advance, and we, you can be assured, we work very closely with the Labor Management Group on benefits. We meet on a monthly basis, and we are planning and sharing that information well in advance.
Okay, so it sounds like it'll be just about as disruptive as it is every other year. Or non-disruptive. So another question is about purchasing this stop-loss insurance, and it says we're going to be purchasing individual stop-loss insurance, and so the city then on individual employees' behalf will be buying a separate insurance, paying for a separate insurance policy for catastrophic problems? And what does that mean, I guess?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, I am not a stop-loss expert, but it, maybe I should ask our Deloitte consultant to come up and talk about purchasing stop-loss.
Let's use the team where we.
Yeah. This is Josh Johnson from Deloitte.
All right, Mr. Johnson, thank you.
Councilmember Gordon, stop-loss insurance is a group policy. So what the city would be purchasing, the individual stop-loss is a group policy with an individual deductible of, in this case, $350,000 per person. So for each person that's on the plan that would exceed that level, they would be, the city would be reimbursed from the one group policy. And then there's also aggregate insurance, so if total claims are 125% of the expected level, the city would be reimbursed for that too. But it's all group policies that the city would purchase, not a policy.
So not an individual item we'd see on our face or anything like that? Okay, thank you very much. Then I just had one last question about paying claims. So the way it would work when we're self-insured is somebody in the finance department would be writing a check to various clinics, doctors, and hospitals to pay all our claims? Or are we still going to be working through a big insurance entity, and they will be distributing the funds?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Gordon, we would not be writing checks directly. We would be hiring Medica as our third-party administrator, and they would be paying the claims as they do today. So we would have our funds set up, and they'd be pulling money from us to pay those claims, but they would be administering just as they do today.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman, I think, was next, and then we have a few.
Just a quick question. We've been talking about this in the city for a long time, but I'll just put myself in the shoes of an employee working as an administrative assistant in a department somewhere in the city. What they want to know is not about stop-loss insurance. They want to know, how will this affect me? So perhaps you can touch on the, how will this affect me? Will people be able to choose Medica still? Will they able, people hear self-insurance, and they think like, the city is setting up a hospital, and we're going to be going to that hospital. So I think it's important, in the context of this conversation, to bring it down to the level of, how will it affect me? And that maybe could then make people feel better, that they don't need to worry about the high-level detail of how it's going to be paid for, but how will it affect them?
Chair Glidden, Councilmember Goodman, yes, that, we have heard that concern from employees. It's a very hard concept for employees to understand. It's not something that's typically discussed, but for the most part, this change would be invisible to employees. If you were to ask an employee at Hennepin County if they know if their plan is fully insured or self-insured, they would have no idea. It's simply the financial arrangement that happens behind the scenes. However, most people are asking already about 2018, and for 2018, for that reason, we have worked very hard to make a plan to transition without any changes to our current arrangement. Because we offered those new accountable care organizations in 2017, and we made some changes to our wellness program, we want to maintain that momentum and engagement that we currently have. So we are planning to offer exactly what we have today, next year, and the only thing that's going to have to be worked out is the cost-sharing piece with labor on behalf of, you know, what the city will pay and what the employees pay with that overall 5% increase. Does that answer your question?
It does, and I think it's really important that we communicate this to the workforce as soon as possible, rather having a news bites thing saying, city moves to self-insurance, which should say, city moves to save money for employees. Health insurance plans remain the same or similar. I mean, I was asked about this in my office. My, you know, employee of 15 years and I, who have been together, gave me the PowerPoint and said, should I be worried about this? So I think it's important for us to remember this is the single most important benefit to most people, and we need to express to them how we can bring down the level of anxiety. I'm sure Hennepin County went through this exact same thing, and we should learn from them as how do we communicate this. It's not only up to the unions, it's up to the leadership of the organization, which means all of us.
Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Palm, excuse me, Quincy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say a few things as we were looking through this. This has been a process for several years, and we probably were in a position that we would have considered this several budgets ago, except for the renegotiation with the agreement with the insurance company that said there wasn't a financial incentive. So I'm really pleased that that gave us some financial assurance, that we could still conduct business in the city and have the insurance benefit that we all expect and rely on, but also gave us a more thoughtful time and process to really investigate what the benefits would be. So I'm very pleased with that. I'm also very excited about how our departments work together on that, especially when we crossed the plaza and used our jurisdictional partners with the county as a great guidance. So in general, I think the process has gone very well internally, and now it comes to the point of, what are we saving? What are we doing? And I'm just cautious when I see something that says we're going to save 2.5%. I just want everybody to understand what we're really doing is avoiding a 2.5% increase. We're not going to be able to use these monies like, oh, suddenly we can reduce our property tax levy 1%, which is basically what it comes down to, or something like that. What we can do is we can say we're avoiding adding our increase in property taxes 1%. That's really important. We need to re- We need to retain these kind of savings within the city, so we can make sure that we have a sustainable benefit plan going forward. And this particular approach seems to really address the concerns that Councilmember Goodman certainly eloquently outlined from an internal employee benefit point of view. And from a finance perspective, this is saying, this is a solid, good financial business decision. This comes from experience, it comes from great consulting work for Deloitte, thank you for that, and partnerships with the county, as well as our internal relationships. So I think that we're at a point, now it's just saying, now I'm asking some really detailed question, like, does this affect what we have to hire and staff for? Is this changing how we're going to do business within the city for administering these plans? Are we going to have to have new employees, and what cost is that, for example?
Chair Glidden and Councilmember Quincy, in Deloitte's experience, implementing self-insurance usually results in around another FTE or less to set up some of the financial procedures that would be changed from what we currently do. So built into the costs of our projected claims is the cost of one additional FTE that we would figure out between HR and finance to allow us to set up the procedures we need to administer.